Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, November 1st, 2022 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to Order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. That's good. Where's the press? Doc, the nation is a very...
I don't have anything under my announcements this evening. Is there anybody here for anything that's not currently posted on our agenda? Seeing is none. We'll go into the first agenda item, which is the public hearing for FY23 tax classification and possible votes. Do they want to make a motion to open the public hearing?
No move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I believe we have...
Mr. Pupka.
Yeah, I'll be presenting.
All right, Doc.
So by way of introduction, my name is Chris Paul from the New Personal Assessor Douglas in Memphis, July.
Excellent.
First time on the board, but not my first time here. This presentation was set up. So what I wanted to do tonight is over an overview of the classification process and the revaluation process, informing the board through the board, hopefully informing the public, how to get to the tax rate. The certification requirements that we go through as far as values and the tax rate. Every single year, we do what's called a premier adjustments. We do a statistical analysis of sales and those statistics and values certified by the state. Every five years, we do what's called a certification year or they call it a reval year. That year, the Department of Revenue actually audits hard work. So they actually go out and visit a little over 100 houses in town and make sure we're classifying and writing, calling ranches, ranches, caves, caves, things like that. And that was what we had this year. In addition to that, they actually look at our sales data, not just the analysis of the sales data. That's why this year is sort of a big deal for Douglas. As I said, once every five years, the Department of Revenue takes a deep dive into the value setting and tax rate setting process. So how do we set the tax rate? It's really just a mathematical formula from the tax levy form, just the amount of money the town's going to collect in taxes. The denominator, what's the value of all taxable property in town, multiplied by 1,000 to the tax rate. It's not a nebulous thing. It's a mathematical statistical exercise. So we're going to work on to the denominator for that. And what the assessors do is, as we do a sales analysis of property sales in town previous calendar year prior to the assessing date, start out with how many parcels we had in prior fiscal year, a single-family home that are large in class, sure windows of parcels in town. So calendar year 2021, there were 149 total sales over 1,000. Of those, 109 are what I consider arms-length sales or willing buyer, willing seller. So you weed out the bank sales foreclosures and things like that that don't represent a true market or a tonic that gets the market out of the markets. You need to get to 2% of your property class for statistically significant. In other words, the numbers are better, the higher the percentage of properties in town sold. If you're low 2%, you're kind of playing with magic. It's not really mathematically sound. Here are just under 4%, so we have a real good quantity of sales, gives us real good numbers. The two key statistics here, this runs across, and this is really the heart of what we go through in our sales analysis, is median ASR. ASR, which is assessment of sales ratio. Think of it, you assess value of your property as a numerator, sales price is the denominator. So thinking of fair market value, that's your percentage. An ASR of 94 means your assessment is 94% of the sales price of the valid product. Median being equal number above, equal number below. The guidelines require it to be between 0.9 and 1.1, but anybody, any reasonable person's going to say, if I'm doing an assessment of greater than 1, I'm over-assessing a property. So realistically, you have to be between 0.9 and 1, because otherwise you're saying, tax me over 100% of the value of your property, then you should be at my counter saying, what do you... Now, you notice we're at a 0.94. Each subclass has to be both within five points of the median for the major class and has to be within 0.9 to realistically a 1.1. So that's why we shoot typically for 94, 95, 96 ASR for our single-family homes. So that is, you can see, if you get something on the low end, like commercial, at just a 0.9, still meet guidelines. Two families, a 0.99, again, is still within guidelines and still below that 1, that's a theoretical upper limit. The next statistical statistic that's important, this 3.4, it's called the coefficient of dispersion, big statistical name. All that means is how scattered are things away from that 0.94? You know, if that 0.94 just means there's an equal number above, equal number below, but all those ones below are 10% and all the ones that are above are 300%, then 0.94 doesn't mean anything. So that's what the COD does for us. If they're spread way away from that 94 ASR, COD is going to be very high. I mean, if everything was at 10, 300, you'd be talking several hundred on this number. Guidelines require less than 10, we're at 3.4. That means everyone, everything's clustered real close to that 0.94 ASR. And that just means statistically, we have a good model, our models are looking good basically. So that's how we adjust all the models for value of properties. Again, same thing, they can be statistics, be within five points of that, and those also have an associated COD. I just left them off of this for readability. So where does that get us? This gets us to the yellow four, it's the taxable value of all property in town. Actually, the value of all property, including exempt, we are required to value exempted properties at their full and fair market value. So if you look over yellow, just under $1.43 billion total value of taxable value of property in town, that's real and personal properties, it doesn't include motor vehicle excise. So what does that mean for changes from last year? Average value went from 355, 412, up about 16.1%. Median, very close to the average, similar change and exact same change in percent. So values in town are up roughly 16%. Historically, 2002 over here, if you look at that graph, you know what the real estate market's done over the last 20-some years. There it is victorily. You can see, here we are, 2020, when everyone thought the real estate market was going to crash with COVID, and instead it did, it found it all of us. So come back to our tax rate calculation, we fill in our numerator here, and we'll move on to where we get to the tax levy. So it's a little less to go through. Here's all the math for tax levy. We take previous years levy limit. We're allowed 2.5% of that per prop, 2.5, grow by that, as well as new groves and new construction, additions, remodels, new decks, things like that. We initial 466,000 there. This is what we consider our levy limit. Just add to that any capital exclusions, this is the debt exclusion amount that we have, the service of debt still outstanding, actual levy. This is by law, under proposition 2.5, how much Douglas is going to collect in taxes. Let's shift to the bottom. This is the actual levy, this is what we are going to collect. Because if you think of a $1.43 billion tax rate, each penny of the tax rate is $14,300. So that 8,600 is the difference between what we legally could collect and mathematically could collect. If we were to add another penny to the tax rate, make that number negative, it would be above this number and therefore in violation of Prop. 2.5. So that's what excess levy capacity aligns. So have a numerator, have a denominator, and so we anticipate the tax rate to be 1436. Anyone paying attention to know, that's $198 less than last year. So that's a significant drop, probably the largest I've seen in the past 16 years doing this. I'm sure you've heard this, values go up, tax rate goes down. Here's our chart that I valued again. I plotted this axis over here, tax rate. But as you can see, you have one flip here, this is 2019, this is when we had the override. So this is the one time you see values and the tax rate go up. That's because the citizens elected to add 0.5 to the taxes. So back to this chart here, as we're adding into the value, we're adding the average tax bill, the average tax bill, which was about 5,800, 5,900 a quarter, so an increase of 120. Median, again, very not much difference from the average, $150. You can see both tax bills are only going up 2.1%. So, you know, critical values are going up, bills themselves aren't going up that much. So classification year, that's what I'm here, sort the properties correctly, values certified. Once that's done, Selectmen's meeting, here's a lot that says you get to shift the burden between... It's important to know, shifting the burden between classes of property does not reduce the amount of tax that the town collects, it just makes one group pay a greater share than it would be just by the street market values. And I'm here giving the presentations. Class of property, I think this is pretty self-explanatory, residential, commercial, industrial, personal property. You'll have to use the term SIP, let's say the CIP, that's where we get that shorthand from, you hear a SIP shift or something like that, that's what we're talking about. So what do we want to talk about when we're deciding to split tax rate or potentially split tax rate or decide on a single tax rate? What percentage of, the biggest factor is what percentage of commercial is out of town? And we all know this, everyone who lives in town or pays taxes in town, we all know that very little commercial, industrial, personal property. It's ticked over 90, just tick under 94% is all residential. We all know that, everyone knows that. Just another view of where we've been historically, you know, if you think of this being a 100-story building, you're only looking at the top 12 stories, because otherwise, this green represents a commercial percentage, it'd just be a tiny flip on top. But you can see, you know, from a low of about 5% to a high of about 7%, the mix has really not changed over 20 years. We hover around that 5% to 7% commercial. Hopefully, that'll change soon, but, you know, we're right now, that's where we are. Other issues, you know, what makes up the commercial class? Do you have that one big taxpayer? Because, you know, or what's the percentage of small business? Because if you split the rate, you're going after your farmers that are in chapter land, but that's considered commercial land, your pizza places, your coffee shops, you're going after the mom and pops, the, you know, electrician that may be running a business inside of his house, maybe depending on how it's set up, you may be going after that commercial rate as well. Is a small relief for residents, creating outsized burden on the commercial taxpayers? You know, are you offering breadcrumbs to residents and walloping near the commercials? Another way of saying that, are we going to impact commercial investment, commercial industrial investment? Are we going to scare people away saying, you know, it's too expensive to do business in Douglas from a tax standpoint? My experience in Oxford, businesses do pay attention to that. And what services do the commercial use relative to the residential? My example, I always use, when Market Bass was built in Oxford, it was about a $800 building, it equaled about 35 houses, well, they didn't put 35 kids in school, you know, they were contributing just as much as having 35 houses built. So, you know, it's a revenue stream that is immediately encumbered by our most expensive service. There we go. So we're looking at some numbers here, this is, you know, flat, 1436, 1436. This is shifting 1% of the burden from residential taxpayers to commercial, 1% of 20 million, that's $200,000. Shifting $200,000 of tax revenue to be collected from residential to commercial. Residential tax rate goes down 14 cents, commercial tax rate goes up $2.15. 15 to 1 ratio, every penny you take off the residential tax rate, you're crushing commercial. Putting that in dollars and cents, your average residential tax bill will be down $57. Your average commercial tax rate, you're adding $673. That's a shifting 1%. So again, giving breadcrumbs and really wallowing in the other side. This is just in graphic form, again, hopefully, see the blue line, there's a single tax rate that's changed. Green line represents residential relief, the orange line represents commercial impact. So you can see, it's a minimal relief and a large impact on the commercial properties. Assessors are supposed to inform you of a few other figures, you touched on these in the presentation, excess levy capacity, difference between what we legally collect and mathematically collect. New growth number for FY23, 466, 514. And the board, board assessors voted to recommend residential tax factor of 1, resulting in anticipated tax rate of 1436 for 2021. Douglas took a little flattery. And I have to ask you a few questions.
I tried to tell you.
It's fine.
So if we knocked it down, I'm not proposing this, I'm just mathematically intrigued. We knocked this down 1%, in essence, saved the tax, the property individual residential homeowner, 200,000?
No, no, no. That's the total amount you would shift residential taxpayer to commercial taxpayer.
No, I know, as a whole, that, right, that shift is 200,000. So if we were really interested in that, maybe not tax the entire levy, 2.5?
Well, then you would be looking into your excess levy capacity, getting money in there. Typically, that money's better in reserves, that can be painful for residents to go after that without a vote, because essentially, you're raising the taxes without having them have a say in it. You know, if you go from having excess levy capacity to taxing to the levy capacity, assessors raise the taxes up to the levy capacity. Normally it is...
What I'm saying is, if we didn't do the 2.5%, like we did, we only raised it 1.25%.
Oh, you're talking about the levy?
On the levy side.
Well, like I said, that would just go into excess levy capacity.
Yeah.
The levy limit is just, it's a straight calculation. It's not something that, you know, you choose how much you're going to, you're going to set the levy limit at. The only choice you have in that would be, you know, debt exclusions, overrides, capital exclusions.
No, personally, we've seen, this is extending the meeting, but we've seen the value of the 2.5%. Thank you, Chris.
I think the board has consistently voted to have one tax rate, and I think it's one of the reasons that economic development is really beginning to happen in the town. So now's the time to continue, I think, that policy and keep going with our efforts, which will produce far more in tax revenues and help the single-family homeowner as well as these buildings come online. So my feeling is that we continue what we've supported in the past with a single tax rate. You can always revisit in the future, once these projects are done, too.
I agree, I'd make a motion...
Close the public hearing.
Well, I don't know if there's anyone else that wants to see.
So, is there anybody that wants to speak on this?
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So now we're on to the motion.
The motion.
To establish the move that we establish the tax rate at $14.36 per 1,000 for both business and residential properties.
Second. No, you're voting to set the residential tax factor at 1.
Okay.
Which, call this...
Okay. Move that we adopt a residential tax factor of 1? Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, sir. Should we, since we have another public hearing, that was for 7:10, should we jump over and take care of any objection to me passing over to doing the public hearing and then coming back to do?
The only thing is, Barch is here.
Yeah, let me take some minutes.
Right.
All right, so we have an appointment for the Oktoberfest Committee, Steven Barch, impossible votes. Steven?
He's probably planning next year that if any, he couldn't make it.
Right.
Well, cleaning up after the last one. Having read here that the Oktoberfest Committee fully supports this appointment, I would make a motion that we, that we make the motion to approve Mr. Steven Barch to the Oktoberfest Committee for a three-year term.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we have a public hearing for two poll petitions on Oak Street and possible votes. So, have at it, man. Does anyone care to make a motion to open the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we have two poll petitions. Do we want to look at these as a group or individually?
I think it might depend on the situation.
Yeah. I have silver. Which one? I think the one that was the biggest question on the previous time was Poll 20, that might be, fifth one down. Oh, no, it's on the second one. What's that? 2A and 2B?
All right. So why don't we...
So we can do the first one, then we're 2A and 2B together, the second and third.
All right, so this is Mass Electric National Grid is requesting permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, which is Oak Street. You're going to install five JO poles, relocate two JO poles on Oak Street, beginning at 0.76 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Oak and Parker, and continuing 1,232 feet in east direction. And you're going to put pole P550 and P650 on the south side of Oak Street, relocate P8, install P850, relocate P9 on the north side of Oak, install P950 and P1050 on the south side of Oak, east of Parker Road. I read well.
Correct. So that's the first petition, right?
Yeah, that's the first one.
Yep.
So, and I'm assuming all of these have the same thing, no issues with conservation, police, or highway, and all the butters have been notified via mail. Is there anyone in the audience with concerns on the first poll petition that we're discussing?
Mike Swicker, 46 Oak Street. The petition A was the original one that came before you the other week. Option B is the new updated one?
We're not on that one.
We're not on that one yet.
On the first one.
We're still on the first one.
All right.
I'll let you know once we hit that one off that. Nobody here on the first poll petition? Anybody have any questions on the first poll petition? Nothing, huh?
Zip. Zip. I'm still trying to decipher all the keys, P50, 60. But nobody in the audience has any questions, it doesn't matter, if I can find a poll enough.
You hope that they would.
All right, so we're, we feel comfortable with the first one as presented?
Well, if nobody has any objections.
All right, so we can move to the next poll. Or do you want me to open this public hearing for this one?
I like to do all three now.
All right.
I do all three, so that one, there's no issues with that one?
No issues with that one?
Then we can make a motion for all three of them at once?
Yep, once we close the public hearing, we can. So we'll move on to 269718542A, which is two JO poles and relocate two JO poles on Oak Street, beginning at approximately 780 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Oak and Parker, and continuing 335 feet in a south direction, installing pole 1650 on the east side of Oak, relocate pole 17 on the east side of Oak Street, south of Parker Road, relocate pole 19 on the west side of Oak Street, south of Parker Road, and install P18 on the east side of Oak Street across from existing P18 that will become P18-89, and install an anchor pole 120. And I think, Steve, is this the one that you had a question or comment on?
Yeah.
Mike.
Mike, sorry.
That's all right. I was called worse.
He answered anyway.
All right, so I'm not completely cured from when I was sick. I apologize. Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Swicker, 46 Oak Street. So this is the updated version that you requested them draw up, is petition B. So they're giving you petition A, which is the original, and B is the update, showing the pole on P20. That's the big change. And the only thing with the P20, and I agreed to, is P21, which isn't on here, I said they can change the pole and put a cable on it, but they didn't even bother to put it on this drawing. And by doing so, they have to re-notify butters, they have to notify everybody within 100 feet. So I don't know why they didn't put P21 on here, which they said they need as an anchor pole.
Yes, absolutely.
For the record, my name is Bob Marianne. I'm a community manager with National Grid. I'm also a resident in Douglas. And John Gifford is here from Power Engineers, the design group that was involved with this. And he can speak to why Poll 21 was not on petition.
Yeah, so Poll 21 would likely need to be replaced, and we would have an anchor, side anchor on private, on Mr. Swicker's property, which is why it wasn't on the petition, because it's already an existing location.
Okay.
Typically, we petition for new locations and add new anchors in the...
And a new anchor wouldn't be in the public way, so...
Correct.
Showing right here, going forward properly.
Does that address your concern?
Yeah, so now if they change the pole, and they work on the scenic road, you still have to notify butters, it's the scenic road.
But it's an existing location.
Right.
Not on, poles are exempt from the scenic road.
Poles are exempt from the scenic road?
I looked it up after we went through this last time, poles are exempt from scenic road.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Does that address your other concern?
That's good.
So the original plan was A. Secondary plan is B, so it's
Correct.
We'd have to make the determination which one of these two plans we are approving?
Yep.
My assuming would be B.
Before we approve that, I just have a question.
Yep.
I had we were driving up Oak Street, and I actually ran into Mike Zwicker, and he explained to me how these poles were going to be, and he explained that the new Pole Twenty, which is across from the old Pole Twenty, which is now Twenty dash one, was going to be on the backside of the stone wall. It appears to be on the edge of the street. Am I looking at it back right?
It would be on the edge of the street, not on the backside of the stone wall.
Would it be on the edge of the pavement?
As far back as we can and stay in the public way.
Yeah, the only concern I have is I measured the pavement at that point, it's only twenty feet wide, so it did make it a little tight in that area. For plowing in the winter, so, just a consideration.
After we met last time, Bob and I met with the highway superintendent at the site and looked at the, at the two different options, and he agreed it would be, you know, the original, A was preferable. He could live with B, but it does certainly narrow the, narrow the the road down a little bit.
And it's worth noting that option B is a little more complicated to construct and maintain. It does add guying angles on a number of poles, including one on your property, Mr. Zwicker. And it also does result in the disruption of the stone wall across the street.
There's also a lot of oak tree right there across the street.
That would probably need to come down, I believe.
Yeah. And Pole Twenty must remain.
Because it's underground.
Because it's underground services on that, too.
Food for thought.
So our hope is that you would approve option A. It's simpler and results in less equipment all around, easy to maintain and doesn't constrict the roadway, as was mentioned.
If I may, through the chair,
Yeah.
as we looked at Mr. Fitzpatrick, if they do that, petition A, they're going to have a guide cable right on Oak Street. Where I showed you.
Yeah, it's going parallel with the road.
Going parallel with the road, right on the street.
So it's heading, it's on the backside of the pole in your direction of travel?
Which is more dangerous.
I did meet with the
Met with the highway
John Ferno, I did meet with John Ferno and asked him if he had an issue with that, and he told me that he didn't have an issue with that. Because my concern was if a plow was going to catch him, he said he didn't have any problem with that, so.
So primarily, the big concern is this, what is it, just a guy wire that's going to be running parallel to the direction of traffic?
Yes.
On A.
And on B, it's additional level of complexity and narrows the roadway a little bit.
But does not enjoy the support of the people most impacted by it.
If I may, through the chair, those pictures I brought in the other week, if you notice where they're going to put the new pole, this tree is right there anyways, right now. So you're not going to be narrowing anything, because they're supposed to be, when we spoke, right where the trees are, right in that general area, is where the pole's going to go. So there'll be no difference in narrowing of anything on the street.
That's right.
I don't believe it's in the location that a tree is now, B, near the barn
Right.
towards the, towards the road.
But it's not the only narrowing, this pole wouldn't be the only narrowing on that scenic road.
No, the whole road's narrow, so.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't encroach onto the pavement, it's just another
Structure.
Another structure that's closer to the road than anything else that's there.
Whole road is narrow and scenic.
Yeah, I'm just assuming that nobody's seen it, so I'm just making sure I'm reading these points to lighten, so that way I can make a decision. Pulling out of my driveway, I'd never see that pole.
Right.
Need.
Do we have anything from John Ferno on either option? I know he didn't have a problem with it, it was the
He told me for the same thing he told you, there was no issue.
On the first one, but what about the second option? The second option?
He reviewed that, too, and he said there was no issue.
Yeah, he's a good one.
Yep.
Not that I don't believe it.
No.
It's up to my own word.
Sure.
Decisions, decisions. Is there any more discussion needed on this before we close the public hearing?
Well, you want to take any input from the audience, or?
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on petitions?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 I'll start. You want, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
I have sat through my share of poll petitions, and oftentimes, there isn't a soul in the crowd. We've had residents indicate a preference. We worked methodically and in a team spirit, came up with a viable option. Bob, I understand your important role in National Grid, especially in times of lack of electricity in town. I know you've rescued us a bunch, but in this case, I think I would personally like to see us listen to the residents and come up with the proper solution, whether it be B.
That's a fine motion.
Well, not a motion, just a thought.
Oh, a thought. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yeah.
My vice chairman, you always have thoughts.
Yeah, I was just thinking of them, to see how I wanted to place them. I'm in line with what Tim's saying. Typically, we just move forward and approve the poll petitions. I'm terrible with names, but as this gentleman expressed the first time, it's more of an economical approach from, from the design perspective, to keep it on the, on the other side of the road, but we do have a couple residents in the town that are affected by where it is. Issues that may have been brought up tonight, but it was brought up the first time about the problem with snow removal in the wintertime, because where this pole is, Mike Zwicker's neighbor, the driveway comes up, it's a pretty good incline coming up, up to the top of that driveway, so you get a, in the wintertime, you're going to have to get a running start, so if you have a huge snowbank there, you're not getting out without getting taken out if something's going to bite you. By reason, I would be inclined to go with the second option.
I agree with it. Compatriots. And nobody had any issues with the first one that was open, two, six, nine, seven, eight, fifty-four dash one?
Nope.
So anyone care to make a motion on these petitions?
If you want, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the poll petitions two, six, seven, one, eight, five, four, dash one, and two, six, seven, excuse me, two, six, nine, seven, one, eight, five, four, dash two B, as has been presented and discussed tonight.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
All right.
Specifying which of the two alternatives?
Yep, that's option A, option B, so. All right, is there any further discussion past that? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, there it is.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That will build it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, review and sign grant of easement for two ninety Main Street and possible votes.
Okay, for the record, Bob Marianne, National Grid.
One hand, one toe.
Yeah. Some months ago, John Ferno approached me about a tree, town-owned tree, on the back of the library lot, and there's a pole sort of in the middle of the tree, and it's kind of dead around it. I actually have a couple of photographs, which I can provide, and what we are proposing to do, actually, the top one is the view from the back of the parking lot, and the bottom one, you can actually see the stake where the pole will go. And the easement sketch, I actually have a couple of those as well.
They have them?
They have them, okay. So the sketch shows the location of the pole after we would set it, where we're proposing, and it does, this is the pole that, the first pole, Pole Nine dash one, is where the service for the library is off of, and then the next pole is the one we would relocate. But just the way the property lines lay out, it, it's on the library property, which we don't currently have an easement for, we want to secure that. It crosses the bank, I've spoken with the bank, and they're okay with this, we expect approval, and obviously, the property owner at two eighty-four, Robert Josie and Brian Josie, have agreed to this. I'm a notary, I'm going to meet with them tomorrow and have it notarized, so hopefully, the board will vote in favor of granting National Grid easement. And we can get the tree removed for John, we will work with him on that.
Yeah, let's really get that pole hidden there, doesn't it?
Pardon?
That pole is like really
It's hard to see it unless you get up close, yeah. It's really right in the middle of that one on the top. And it's kind of dangerous.
Been there a while.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, are you looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we grant the easement to two ninety Main Street, as has been discussed tonight?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Two.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening. Actually, I may sit for the CRG one.
All right. Special town meeting review with the town clerk and town moderator. We just have the moderator. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't even know why you invited the town clerk, she doesn't need to be here. Don't get me wrong, I love Chris, but there's just What's that, right, yeah. She's got enough stuff to do.
She wanted to present all of the motions at town meeting this morning.
Well, you know, it's, one of these years, you know, I'm, I'm going to make her at least one, run one article, just to torture her, yeah, just because, but she's also so nice to me, I can't, I can't quite bring myself to do it.
You are, Ron.
Oh, I know. So everything looks really straightforward. I think the only real question I had is, you know, obviously, we're bringing back the, the solar bylaw. And, and it's for residential and commercially scaled projects. So let me start by asking, is there a different setback, are there different setback guidelines for commercial projects as opposed to residential projects in general? All right. I was having a really hard time finding setback language other than for, like, the windmills, so.
We don't have a solar bylaw.
That's not what I said. I said I had a hard time finding setbacks in general, other than in our windmill bylaw.
For what?
Just in, like, like what I just asked, like the commercial
All right.
Yeah.
For a commercial solar, we don't have a solar bylaw.
No, just commercial property in general.
Generally.
Okay. So.
All the setbacks were in the chart, in the back of the zoning bylaw.
In the back of the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
All right, so any idea what the, does anyone have the zoning?
I don't want to misspeak.
Okay. So then, the, well, actually, I mean, you're probably the only one that can answer this. The is this proposing to allow commercial-sized solar systems in residential neighborhoods? Because the way I read this, again, I'm not a zoning expert by any stretch of the imagination, but if you look at the commercially zoned I'm trying to think of how to, how to describe it, the commercially zoned projects, the setbacks, yeah, so setback for commercially scaled solar energy systems follow the setbacks for residential residential setbacks, and then the other part, there was another part in the bylaw that also said something about commercial-sized in residential. So is, is the purpose of the, is, is one of the intents of this bylaw to allow commercially-sized solar installations in residential zoned areas?
Just by way of process, when we know we have a lot of questions, we can always have the department head here, but we need to know in advance.
Okay.
Because sometimes they have scheduling conflicts. So the zoning, the, the solar bylaw that was, I think it's gone through the planning process, was put forth by that department with the aid of legal counsel. Generally, we've been welcoming to solar, but we don't want large solar developments in residential areas, because it'll only build resistance to the notion of, what we didn't want to do was so tightly restrict the size of a solar field on a piece of residential property where it wouldn't be big enough to, to interact with the house in the way that you would want if you had a bigger lot, two and a half acre lot or a three acre lot. The, the exact workings of it, how it will go through each and every lot, is, you know, I would want Matt Benoit here to comment, because
Okay.
he's put a tremendous amount of effort into this. He was in the planning department in the town of Auburn when Auburn wrote the solar bylaw that they used to govern their, for solar fields.
And that was the, that was, the language from Auburn is what was presented at the last town meeting, and there was an amendment that shifted the intent of that bylaw in a way that we couldn't allow at the last town meeting, which is why we're here now, and, like I said, and, so in, in reading this, and the changes made, it looks to, to me like we're allowing commercial-sized projects in residential zoned areas. And if I'm incorrect in that, then, then I would like to be corrected and have at least a, an understanding of this, so that I can correctly moderate the, the discussion at town meeting and make sure we're staying within scope of what this bylaw's intent is.
Can we get Matt get back to you on that?
Yeah, so I've written down your question. The biggest moving piece, so the part that I am very well aware of, was there was an objection from a specific member of town meeting on the restriction of the amount of frontage you had to have in order to be able to build the solar field. And it was her opinion that too much frontage was required, so that an awful lot of land that could be developed behind the roadway and those residential developments, you know, homes along the roadway, you couldn't get to your backland and develop it for solar. So this new version of the bylaw has a minimum of sixty feet of frontage.
Yeah.
It'd be just enough to poke a road through, if you had backland that you had anticipated you might develop someday, and that was going to be your driveway, or your private way, or your roadway, that still would be viable now to
Yeah. Yeah. I believe one of the other objections was about the amount of trees that could be removed in order to, you know, to have commercial solar. And it doesn't look like there's anything in here about that--
I don't think--
--this time. So, yeah, if I could get that question answered, it would be extremely helpful.
So, Mr. Chairman, I know it's confusing sometimes to look at the zoning code because now everything is labeled exactly precisely. But in Appendix B, which in this lime green booklet, it's page one of three in Appendix B, it says minimum yard sizes and feet. That is actually your setback.
Okay.
So it says front, side, rear. So if you're asking about commercial, in the commercial zone, your minimum front setback is 50, and your 15 on the side and rear.
Okay. So, is 50 in the front?
Fifty, fifteen.
Or, I'm sorry--
Fifty.
Okay.
Fifty, fifteen, fifteen, where--
Where the residential is actually more than that.
Yeah, so if you're in a 90,000 square foot zone, it's gonna, you're gonna need 50 in the front, 25 sides, and 25 in the rear. If you read under this on page 524 in our packet, residential, under the commercial, that's, shall require a special permit through the planning board. And according to section 9.3, I don't know what 9.3 is on a zoning board, but that's the answer to your question, the difference between residential and commercial. But--
It didn't. Yeah, I read 9.3 and 9.4, and--
So if you have a very large piece of property, so you had--
Mm-hmm.
You could, in a residential area, but because of the size of the solar field, after you exceed 30 kilowatts, right?
Yep, that's, yeah, it's--
It's considered a commercial application.
Right. So you'd be able to, you'd be able to put a commercial size into a residential area?
One of the things you have to be aware of, then, solar falls under the Dover Amendment. So it needs to be reasonably regulated. And I think this is what the whole purpose of this bylaw is, to try to, we have nothing. So this gives us some guidelines as to how we regulate it under reasonable method. I think that's what the purpose of this was, but Matt, I could answer that, yes.
Yeah, it was kind of a wide-open field, to use a pun. And so when we attempted, we had problems with stormwater runoff. So the genesis of this, I'm very well aware of, because we had tremendous amount of effort was put into helping people with all the runoff, specifically the Wollam Lake--
Yep.
--solar field. And it was, it was almost like a game of not it, you know? Who's the regulatory authority? Who's going to go out there and interact with the solar field developer and get them to do things that they needed to do? And it just wasn't a clear line of authority. So it is much easier, through the permitting process, to have a bylaw with specific requirements in it and to designate who it is that the solar field developer's going to interact with for permissions for various things. We really wanted to tighten that up because we felt like residents were exposed to a necessary amount of inconvenience because we didn't have a firm foundation for the regulatory authority.
Okay. That's really the only, the only question I had on anything here, so. Any questions for me?
Nope.
We'll be indoors and be running, you know, pretty much the way the last bunch of meetings have been.
I can test the outdoor town meeting.
I miss it a little bit.
You don't miss chasing--
Yeah. I don't miss that.
The wind blowing--
I don't miss the wind blowing my hair in my eyes. Yeah.
I will miss Rich's two-liter bottle of Coke rolling down across the parking lot.
That was pretty good, Dave.
No, I will say, I will always look upon those fondly.
I do have a question for the moderator.
Absolutely.
So at the end of the warrant, there's this, this either-or construction, right? There's a, does town meeting want to vote to remove a specific section of the zoning code?
Yep.
And that's a two-thirds vote. And then the next article is to--
Replace it.
Replace it with a general bylaw, which is a majority vote. The warrant was organized in this way to, because the higher threshold should come first, right? If people don't vote to take it out of the zoning code, there's really no need for them to vote the general bylaw. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page. We understand that's why we did it that way.
So is-- So is your proponent, or your, I guess, the course of action if Article 12 failed would be to pass over Article 13?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that everybody's understanding?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then take the other one out.
Well, you would have two, and that's silly.
Too contradictory.
Yeah, but why not? It makes things--
You'd have it last in time, but we're going to have all kind of conflict of laws, law class, reminiscence.
Could be good bus journey.
Yeah, that would--
Well, I mean, if somebody wanted to be--
Cheeky.
Yeah, I mean, I guess they could, they could make a lot of amendments.
Right.
Please don't do that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you all.
So it's review and approve job description for council on aging administrative assistant slash outreach assistant and possible votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, on the November town meeting warrant, there's a classification amendment for this position. It would be moved from the MS1 grade to the MS2 grade. And the director of the Adult Social Center requested that change, driven largely by the change in the responsibilities of a person working in that position. So I've been through some of this tortured history already in past meetings in the last couple of weeks, but there have been a number of staffing changes over the years. And Patrice Rousseau has done a lot of, she basically was the outreach coordinator. She never stopped being the outreach coordinator. She added the director's responsibilities to what she does for the town. We have capable staff who's there 30 hours a week now, and Patrice is looking to move some of those outreach coordinator responsibilities to that full-time staff person. So the job description has been updated to support what we're asking town meeting to do. So the job description was there and updated to reflect the added responsibilities that justify the change from MS1 to MS2.
Do we care to make a motion on this? Do we need to make a motion on this, Matt?
So the way we've always treated job descriptions is that we've always asked the board to vote them, because it's basically a policy, right? We, when we post this position, we'll lock in these duties, responsibilities, and requirements. And if they're changed again, they should come back before the board so we can discuss it in public, because it informs town meeting as to what they're voting on in classification.
Make a motion that we approve the job description for the COA administrative assistant.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Review CRG cubes at Douglas/Mumford Crossing Traffic Management Plan and Possible Votes.
So while they're making their way up, Mr. Chairman, just to introduce this, if I may, you as the road commissioners have authority over what occurs in the roadways around town. And in an abundance of caution, belt, suspenders approach to this, we ask that CRG ask for your approval of their plan so that there's no dispute over where they're supposed to be and what they're supposed to do.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Todd Maury from Beals Associates. We were the project engineers and entitlement group that worked through the design and permitting of this project. Got a couple of members of Clayco, the construction firm, with me tonight, Mitch Rousch and Tom LaMester. I always thought it was MC, but it's LaMester. What we're here really to talk about is a traffic management plan that we put together that will allow us to front-load the construction of a bridge across the Mumford River. We'd like to do that as early in the overall project process as possible, with the goal of trying to minimize the amount of traffic that's coming down Northeast Main Street, spreading throughout the town on that side. It's much better, I think, for everybody, not just for the construction group, but obviously for the town, if we can get as much traffic off Gilboa Street and directly into the project site without rerouting them under the back. So that's really what our goal is. As a side note to that, in addition to having the regular bridge structure that we're, we currently have in our design, we're also looking at an option for a temporary bridge that would allow us to get into, have that traffic cross over the river even earlier in the process. If we went with just the regular bridge, it would probably be July or August of next year before we could get vehicles across it. If we go with a temporary one, I don't know if we have the schedule finalized yet, but it might be even as early as March or April.
March, yes.
So it buys us quite a bit of time. So that's just some of the things that we're working on, trying to get that done. And I, it would be poor of me if I didn't give a lot of credit for being pushed in that direction. Our entire team's been pushed in that direction by Mr. Manerick. He's--
That's surprising.
He, he doesn't like to take no for an answer, so.
Bob?
Yeah, that's-- It looks like that surprises all of you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to these gentlemen from Clayco, who can probably tell you a little bit more about the schedule. I believe you have, I have a larger version of that plan that shows the proposed traffic management routing. If you'd like to take a look at a bigger version, pass that around. Want to add anything, Mitch, or just want to field questions?
The actual start of this kind of begins in December with National Grid relocating some power poles on Gilboa Street so that we'll be able to get in there. And then the, through the winter, they'll be able to do clearing and the abutments. And then with the option of adding a temporary bridge, that should be available, as Todd said, early March, which then alleviates a lot of the traffic through town. It would be probably six months from there if we didn't use a temporary bridge before that, we wouldn't even be able to utilize that.
So a temporary bridge really does buy you a lot of time?
Yes.
Which gives you a jump on the project itself.
It's significant, yep, yep. Just some of the highlights of that plan that you're looking at right now. All the signage has been, you know, on both sides of that diversion are in accordance with Mastod, as far as advanced warning, moving the lanes over and things like that. It provides two lanes of travel all the way through the area. The, it won't be a situation where there's just cones. There will be permanent or semi-permanent barriers to protect not only the vehicles but also the workers in that area. That's--
Like Jersey barrier type?
Yeah. You guys using metal ones? Or you don't, concrete?
At this time, I don't know.
Yeah, they'll either be metal or concrete. But the standard barriers that you would see on the highway.
And this is all for to position a pile driver?
This, it's to position several pieces of equipment. One, the pile driver, to provide enough room for the actual workers to get into those areas. And then as we start to get, as we have the abutments on both sides, it'll also serve as a laydown area so we can start putting initially the temporary bridge, but eventually the steel members across for the permanent bridge.
How many days do you think it'll be driving piles?
I can't answer that one at this time.
Just give us a little warning so we can warn the residents.
Get excited, right?
There's a little bit of a bowl effect in that part of town.
Understood.
We'll get some reverb. There was still your intention to ship in panels to build the building or even to tilt the place?
Right now, it is to bring them in on trucks, so, precast panels.
So what people need to understand, I think, is about how many trucks, you're going to put them in a much more convenient place, right?
Exactly.
Bring them over the temporary bridge. About how much truck traffic is that going to keep off Northeast?
While we're in precast erection, you're talking anywhere from 20 to 30 trucks per day.
Now they'll directly exit off--
Yes.
--highway and into your site as opposed to going around up Northeast.
Correct.
It's kind of the whole, like, beauty of it, pretty good all there. If we can find a way to keep the truck traffic out of downtown, that'll keep people pretty happy. Because that's been one of the biggest concerns that's been blowing up on social media.
I think that was also the biggest concern during the planning board--
Yep.
--hearings that we had, was what are we doing with the truck traffic?
I mean, the temporary bridge, it all sounds like a good viable plan to me.
You've built one of those before?
A temporary bridge?
Yeah.
I gotta say, no.
Oh, no?
No.
Your bridge contractor has.
Yes.
You're not building it personally?
No.
No, I think that's great. It's a small price to pay for the end goal, which is great to see.
No questions?
Do you need any kind of vote to support their management plan?
I think it would make sense to put a motion out there and vote on record.
Make a motion to support the CSD cubes crossing traffic management plan as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Don't let Bob run the pile driver.
And do not let Bob dope the bridge.
He's going to tell you he knows how to drill it, but don't believe him.
Bob the building.
Can we do it? Yes, we can.
All right, so we have the BFCC recommendation for design of highway department and possible votes. Lou Shirley's here. How are you this evening?
Good. Thank you.
Would you like to come up and speak on the recommendation from BFCC or just take it out of the memo?
Thank you. Shirley Mazinski, 60 Oak Street. And I'm also the chairman of the Building and Facilities Committee. And as you know, you referred the issue of the safety committees, our boards, to the Building and Facilities after a lot of input from the various, well, the police department, the fire department, and the highway department. And thank you, Mike, for your involvement in that with them. We did, as a board, tour all the facilities. And it was quite obvious that the highway department was the one most in need for safety, for keeping the vehicles that the town puts a lot of money into, giving them some cover to, you know, help keep them in better condition than out in the storm they're out in enough. Also to repair and do work on the vehicles. That's not to say that the fire department does need some expansion, better conditions as far as when they have to work during the night shift, and also keeping-- as far as when they have to work during the night shift, and also keeping an area for their equipment and all the stuff that they need to keep ready to go. The Police Department could use some extra facility, but not as severe as the Highway Department and the Police, the Fire Department. And also, I think eventually it needs to come down to this space here upstairs. And how is this all going to be shifted around, maybe get more facility for the Police Department? One of the questions that we asked was, what's the pros and cons of where you're located? And basically, they all felt that it was good central areas where they were. The Highway Department doesn't have enough room for all that they have. They have some old buildings in the back where they use, what they use for storage. The Fire Department has the building on Cottage Street that has some of their equipment in it. But it really gets down to the Highway Department needs it the most. So that's why we recommended that the Board of Selectmen proceed to design a new Highway Department building and/or ancillary facilities up to and including the final design. And Matt, you were very helpful in helping us word the right article. Or article, yeah, article. So that's where we're at, and that's our recommendation. And if you have any questions? I mean, every, every department was very helpful, took their time, a lot of energy to support their issues, and answered all our questions. Very good.
Thank you for spearheading this show. Much appreciated.
Do you have any questions? Try to answer.
Was there any, I may be getting ahead of it, but was there any discussion of where the Highway Department new building might go?
There were a few question, questionable areas, but I think it really gets down to proceeding with what would work. Right, Matt?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, answer Selectmen Born's question. So the project contemplated, is it really soup and nuts? So the design work would have phases, and the first phase would be feasibility. So we would be saying to the designer, here are four or five possible locations that the town already controls. And looking at the operational requirements of the Highway Department, salt, sand, storage, you know, which of these locations is going to work best from your perspective? After that feasibility is done, we would ask them to proceed to the next milestone, which would be conceptual design. We want to go to town meeting with as much detail as we can without actually paying for a full design. So just enough detail to get a funding request in front of town meeting. People feel like they know what they're voting on. And only after that, we would ask them to go from about 30% design all the way to 100% design and go out to bid. So it is a process that would probably take two town meetings.
And we did ask for maps of where the buildings are, acreage and so forth, and it's tight.
A little bit.
But, and also, you know, there's issues with a couple of areas of wetlands, so, you know, it's something that is going to have to be seriously looked at.
It's never easy.
No.
It wouldn't be Douglas if it was easy.
Hey, every, every community has.
Has challenges.
Yes, yeah. We touched briefly on one site for all, but, and Matt gave us a very good overview of that type of a proposal. But I think the board members felt more concerned about what the cost would be, although you did give us some options as to, in the long run, maybe it would be less. But they felt that the Highway Department was the one that needed the most.
I agree with them wholeheartedly.
Highway Department is a challenge. And yes, you know, you, the town will be paying for a facility for offices, and there's, I believe, a tank that needs to be replaced. And so, and it will have to be because this will not happen overnight.
Yeah, so, we will have, we've got above-ground heating oil tanks that are not in the greatest condition. So it's been recommended they be removed and replaced. And since we're going to be operating out of that building for at least another couple of years, we're just going to have to do it.
Makes sense.
But we don't want another spill. We know what those costs.
I was just going to say, beats another oil spill and core samples and digging to the center of the earth to determine what might be there.
Just to remind folks at home, Mr. Chairman, there's more than just the barn that's in the front with the trucks parked in it. You can't forget the salt barn in the back. And DEP really wants us to have a controlled environment for our sand supply as well. So it can't just be out.
It's supposed to be undercover.
So what we're looking to do this, it's, when we say ancillary buildings, that's what we're talking about, salt and sand storage, and then any cold storage that we can swing, which doesn't need to be elaborate, just needs to be a roof with walls that is going to keep the elements away from pieces of equipment. That's basically all we're doing at Cottage Street. It's just with every single piece of empty space that we have, we have stuck something in it, whether it's a sign trailer or chipper or, you know, so.
Are we asking?
As the chair says, we're getting tight.
Yeah.
And as far as the Fire Department, we are doing, as you know, this work being done there to correct some of the deficiencies that are, that are there. So.
That's the other challenge all in its own. Like, is a building made for a call department that we turn around the glocks, so.
Right.
There was going to be some shortfalls there.
But there is possibly some room for expansion there. So, again, the committee decided it was the Highway Department that was the most in need.
Thank you.
Quick two cents on this. The, when I suggested this a year ago, then we had the, the little subcommittee that we put together. The goal of that was to identify what their challenges are now, where they're, where they're going to 15, 20 years down the road. And I purposely wouldn't let them talk about building sizes, locations, any of that, because that'll come through the design portion of it. The goal was to create a menu for a design professional to come in and, as Matt suggested, tell them the properties that we have under our control that we could easily use. But also give them a menu so he knows, they know exactly what they're dealing with. I asked specifically, what has to be in a, in a control-conditioned space? What could be in cold storage? What could be outside? What could be inside? If you need a meeting room, how many people do you need in that? Don't tell me you need a 10 by 20 room. How many people? Because there's a math problem. And they did a very good job, all three departments, to compile all that information. I was real hesitant not to even talk about anything to do with construction, just I made them give us that information to do that. And here we are, at this point, we've gone through the processes. And I agree with the assessment of the Building and Facilities. However, I would like to at least go a little bit further and bring in some consideration, even if it's a conceptual or just an evaluation of the other two departments. So then that information that we just compiled isn't lost. We actually have some sort of baseline. So then we know where we're going. If we just dismiss it right away, we'll never know that answer. So that's my two cents on that.
That was more like seven cents, but it's.
Maybe, maybe seven cents. But it's important not to lose what the original focus was, that's all.
So you're saying go all in on the highway, but also invest a little bit of time and maybe some resources in looking at the other two to move the, the piece up a couple pieces? Things that we're going to have.
Well, at least identify what our options are for those buildings. Puts, I don't think it'll be a tremendous cost to at least get an opinion as to where we could go with that. If you, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. But the Highway Department, that's a no-brainer. It's past the point where they can physically fit the trucks in there. I went in there within the last 90 days, nobody knew I went in there. I went in there, set up my laser, and I took some shots of the beams that are in there. And the reason why I did that is I went to Dave's retirement party and I'm looking at, hmm, doesn't look right. The center beam in that building, and I don't know what the through bolts are going to that, that they're attached to, you can see the nuts on them, it's deflected in the center two and three-quarter inches in the summertime. So I'm curious to see what it's going to be in the wintertime. I haven't yet had the opportunity to stop by. John said I poke my head up through the scuttle hole there and see what those, those rods are actually going to, supporting those beams that are in there. But the conditions are just terrible there. If we're going to be two to three years out, that trailer, I think the lease is $900 a month, we may want to consider purchasing one. Because we're just throwing money away at this point. We've almost paid the purchase price of one. Whether we sell it after the fact, repurpose it for something else, use it for an emergency thing or something, but we're just throwing money away at this point if it's going to be two or three years out.
I would caution you of putting your head up in the scuttle hole.
Something may give you a little.
Something may give you a little nibble while you're up there.
Jonah tried that with a whale. It didn't work out for him.
Hey, boss, how about we send Kevin?
If I may, this is, I agree with Mike as far as not losing sight of the other, the other departments, because that's why I brought up some of the issues that I did. Because, you know, this community is growing. And the more it grows, the more personnel you're going to need, the more equipment you're going to need. So to me, it's a no-brainer.
No, it's agreed.
Well, yeah, and with that, if we identify what the options are, and I'm going to use the Fire Department for argument's sake, because we're putting a tremendous amount of money into that, or at least voted in a bunch of money that we haven't spent yet, but we're going to at some point. At least we know what direction we're going in with that building as to, for this heating, everything that we're doing in there. If it's going to be a permanent, full-time building, then we keep going down that path. If it's going to be an auxiliary building or a second location, then it may change our thought process.
Yeah. No, and I mean, to Shirley's point, the town is growing, and these departments are going to grow. And it's almost like you really cut down on the meaningful life of apparatus and vehicles and things like that when you're leaving them outside. Like, it's just, it's not a good investment for the town on the, on the things that we need in order to keep things going. So I agree, we need to kind of stay the course on it with highway being the top priority and then at least get a ballpark idea on the other two.
And I think, you know, again, it's, it's always good to have vision as far as what happens to these buildings if they're, they're not, you know, useful. Because don't leave, don't have another building left in town that's empty.
We have enough of those.
Yeah.
If you find anybody that wants to open a taco shop, I know it's a popular realm.
There may even be a grant program for that.
For taco shops?
I'm going to start one.
You're going to grant for a taco shop?
And I do have a suggestion. It's not regarding this. You have to get another mic, microphone.
Well, I was going to say, in May, you had that opportunity.
No. Another microphone, because sitting back there, you can't hear very well, you or Mike.
You need that mic on the mic?
Yeah.
As Senator Thurmond used to say, "Speaking to the machine." You guys got an in-between the two of you.
I'm happy to donate my microphone to both of them.
Yes, it's good.
Lisa never says anything. She doesn't need a mic.
Noted, duly noted.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you for your hard work.
It's the committee.
Can they get a two-headed mic?
No, we're just trying to get it to work. Go easy.
No, I, you know, the committee, I think we've finally got, you know, down to where I don't have to keep calling to make sure I have a quorum. We need one, at least one more member. Not easy.
Other town departments' seats, are they filled and represented?
No, I think Capital needs one, R2.
Yeah.
And Building and Facilities, zoning, yeah.
But I think I'm building a facility. Is it the moderator's appointment? That's all.
I'm moderator.
Yeah.
I think you're all leased out.
Because the school department finally filled.
You can ask Ben.
Right?
Shirley, thank you.
Hang around till late, Keith. You're going to start getting blamed for stuff.
I can be anywhere and get blamed. I've actually witnessed that.
So we need a vote on that?
We do.
Yeah, so you need to direct what the efforts of the, of my office are going to be.
Who'd like to throw a motion out there on this one?
I would like to put out a motion to.
Again, would you please speak into the mic?
I would like to make a motion to recommend for the design of the Highway Department as well as the conceptual design or ideas on the police and fire.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none, although.
Hey, man, you going to say something? No.
Did you want to say something?
No, it's all right.
No, go ahead.
I'm just curious about expected costs of.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if this is the approach, what I'm likely to do is put out an RFQ for what some people refer to as a house doctor. So an engineering firm, design engineering firm, that would take each one of these as three different projects, but be on a consistent retainer basis, you know, and not, retainer's a bad word around here, on a consistent fee basis. By locking somebody into all three pieces of it, you're likely to drive your cost down because now they know that they're going to be the design engineer for all three. And we would be a capital item that would probably appear in the warrant article for capital items in the, on Springtown meeting. You know, I do, taking what is referred to very eloquently.
Do we need to refer it as the cap?
Swinging something, something, yes, a swag. It's about $110,000 for all three, about $35,000 each, to get to conceptual design. And then when you go from conceptual design to final, just about 10% of the final building cost is what you're going to end up paying for our debt service.
Did I answer your questions, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any additional questions, Tim?
At this time, no.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
If this is going to go in the Springtown meeting as a capital, does it have to get referred to the Capital Committee?
But I don't know that it would be wise to put this into the score. But I don't know that it would be wise to put this into the scoring mix. It's been through so many processes, it's gonna stand on its own.
Right, yep. Who would present that to capital?
So this would be my work.
Okay, you're the town administrator, okay. No more questions?
That was more than one question.
Hey, you didn't stop me.
Gavel, gavel.
I don't have one. Can we put in the budget a gavel?
No.
No. You're not, you're not allowed to have one.
It's a micro, yeah. Take your pick.
I'll take the gavel.
Did I hear a vote on this?
Not yet.
We're working on it.
We had a motion that's been made and seconded, and we've had a lot of discussion. Is there any further? Seeing is none, all those in favor say aye.
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 You can have that, she gave me this one. It's not like she says anything or anybody listens to it. I didn't move it, you did it.
Are you trying to throw her under the bus for the moving of the mic?
Of course I am.
All right, fine then. All right, so we have a discussion on stretch energy updates and possible votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, the genesis of this is that, in the course of discussing with the Attorney General's office and in connection to the national, natural gas franchise application of the town, the AGO's asked, office asked that the town of Douglas through its select board at least consider putting the stretch energy code, the revised, call it stretchier energy code, on the warrant for the Springtown meeting for a vote. Now, in the grand scheme of things, you put anything to a vote at town meeting, right, that's the only promise that's being made here. This is a really thick compendium of ideas, designed to get the entire Commonwealth to a certain climate change, carbon footprint status by a target date. And that's gonna involve a lot of review and discussion. So, it just came out this week, the Department of, the Office of Energy Resources at the state level just put out their draft. So, nobody really even knows, I mean, obviously, the code geeks who really care about this stuff probably have been involved in the drafting of the whole thing. But in terms of what regular folks have been, have access to, it's all been a work in progress until this point. So, nobody can expect you to take a position A and A on it at this point. It's just a question of, would you vote so we can send a letter to the AGO's office that you will at least put it on town meeting?
Well, this says that we would at least consider putting it on.
Consider putting it on.
Consider it. And we're currently in stretch code now.
The town of Douglas has already adopted the existing stretch code.
So it's not like we're leaping up to from where we currently are at work.
We're knocking ourselves in, and this would look unfavorable by the Attorney General's office.
Yeah. So with that, I'd make a motion, if you're ready, Mr. Chairman-
I am.
-to provide a letter of intent to the Attorney General's office for the select board to review pending updates to the specialized stretch energy code by the Department of Energy Resources for the board's consideration to be placed on the warrant for the May 2023 at the annual town meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. ARPA discussions, possible votes.
I have it on, because I was told to keep putting it on.
I don't have no papers and sections, so.
Yeah, I think we can, shall we move past the ARPA discussion and possible votes? But thank you for keeping it on, Lisa.
Yeah. Thank you for saving the tree.
We'll go to updates and discussions on town goals and possible votes, and that we do have in our packet. And I believe in the last meeting, what we're looking to do is try and establish these goals that we can present in to Matt to give him a more full direction on the projects that he has. Matt, I know that in one of your reports, we discussed the conceptual idea of somehow Douglas being able to become its own energy provider.
Isn't that role of municipality, no?
Isn't that what?
Is that the second? No?
No, it was back under energy planning, micro grids, role of municipality and facilities plan.
So, Mr. Chairman, Stuckman Fitzpatrick is correct, that's what I was getting at, with role of municipality, as in, would you have a municipal light and power? Would you just wanna be the public partner without going all the way to the enterprise fund quasi-business arrangement of a light and power? That's, that's come up in every conversation we've had in the last week with the school department about, you know, their needs there and their potential there for onsite There's a lot of work that goes into this, so I would need, I've already tasked the community development director to do some basic research. We would also need some leverage from CMRPC, which they have offered. No one has done a municipal light and power petition close to 100 years for light and power. It's being done for internet, cable connectivity, in a number of places, including the town where I live, we voted the last town meeting to do it, because everybody's so sick and tired of the dominant player, that they wanna just take over their own wire, fiber networks in town and build them out.
That was gonna be part of my thought, is like, I lived in Shrewsbury for, it was a long time ago. That was the big thing, they were Shrewsbury light and cable. You got your internet, your cable, and your power all from the town of Shrewsbury, and they collected the revenue from it.
Cable bills are high there.
Yeah, I mean, probably, probably five, five percent higher than Comcast.
The appeal of it, though, let's go back to power for a second, is that, basically, you control your rate structure, in your accountable fear rate structure, for a different kind of generation. So right now, when you build a big solar field, commercial solar field, what you're looking for is a relationship with National Grid. You need that interconnection agreement to hook up all that power that you create and sell it into the grid where it becomes part of the mix that's on the grid for people to purchase. These so-called microgrids, and by extension, municipal light and power, you would, you might build, for instance, a solar generation facility, batteries for storage of the power, and then your own off-takers, municipal buildings, a large commercial development, school buildings. You're, you're creating the power and selling it to them at whatever rate you need to defuse whatever borrowing you do to build the original asset. And you're in control of that, whereas if you buy power from the grid, we've all seen it, right? You could be at 14 cents a kilowatt hour, and then everybody decides to have a war, and there are other considerations around the world, and now we're paying 33 cents a kilowatt hour. But if you're, get your own light and power or your own microgrid, you're gonna just plug away at whatever it is, your own internal economics. You're not paying for distribution and transmission of the electricity. You're basically paying to generate the electricity and bring it to the facility that's gonna use it. I'm tending towards recommending that to you, because I don't see us winning the competition across the entire Commonwealth to get National Grid to invest in substations and other assets that are critical for efforts to address electrification and needs. Even with our existing grid in the town of Douglas, we only have one line that has any real capacity on it. It comes out of Uxbridge and comes up across the town of Uxbridge and up northeast Maine, where it picks up a solar field in Uxbridge and a solar field in Douglas, terminates right around downtown. That is the only line that has real capacity for significant electricity movement. Everything else is already oversubscribed, and the only reason why it's not a problem is because we're never all loading at the same time. So there's flexibility on the top end. But we're not gonna be able to put a 15-megawatt solar field on, on the wires we have without significant upgrades. Now, you've seen that when grid has had time, they have been moving forward. So you see three-phase power lines overhead to hook up Wollam Lake and to hook up West Street solar fields to the grid. In fact, that's driving a lot of our new growth for this year. You notice that new growth figure from the assessors' presentation, of 466,000. Really big chunk of that is the new electrical assets that have been installed by grid. But once we started talking about a substation, now we're talking at National Grid's prices and timeframe, three or four years, $20 million. I don't know that we're gonna win that race. Why would they do that for us, when there are so many municipalities that are 40, 50,000 people close to Boston that already have a lot of wires and a lot of customers, a lot of off-takers, and it's all gonna be filled up as soon as they build it. But when we start talking about things like electrifying, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, building charging stations for people's cars, it's gonna double the amount of electricity you have running into a building. So if you did that, even in a small town like Douglas, you're really talking about needing not just one substation, but two or three. And it's just, I don't see us getting to the top of the inbox. We might be able to command some additional attention because of the economic development efforts on the east end of town. But beyond that, I don't know that we're gonna do it. So, I'm trying to find creative ways to basically jump ahead. And you jump ahead by, you're gonna build the asset anyway, but instead of selling it to the grid, sell it to yourself. And just build whatever ownership structure you need to be able to raise the revenue to pay the bill to buy the stuff. So far, the industry has reacted well to that. There's a, one last thing, Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna interrupt Sukhman Bona, but I just want to finish my thought. One of the things that's out there right now is, the Commonwealth in its policy directives is not only focused on financial and economics, they're also focused on their, their policy initiatives, which may not be the most economically effective thing. So there's, as one industry guy says it, you know, the thumb is on the scale, pushing the scale down in favor of municipal involvement. Maybe for some of the same reasons that I just said, maybe it's because we're the most highly motivated customers in the system. But when solar developers work with municipalities, they get a much bigger incentive from the state than if they do it as, with a private company.
The question I just popped in my head is, can we build it and outsource the maintenance? As, my understanding is it's relatively nominal once it's operational, where we don't have to develop this big new department. Is that a viable option?
Yeah, so that's that sort of, it's vague, right? It's gray, public entity partnership. So you don't form your own department to own and maintain. You could, you could still do it, and then outsource everything, you could, right? You're just taking ownership of the asset. But what's been envisioned in the past was that a private party would actually take over the cost of the construction and building of the thing, and actually source to us the maintenance, because we're gonna cut the grass a couple times a year, right? But that makes us enough of a partner to say that we have stake.
It's definitely interesting. I think it's-
Looking into it is time-intensive. So if you want that to continue, I just want us all to be on the same page, that that's something you'll get regular updates on, and an effort will be put against it to drive it to a conclusion, and not just conversation. A lot of these were written back in the summer, and we've made a lot of progress against them.
Oh, and these?
Without anything else to, to guide me, it's, you know, we are, we're pushing the GIS records issue. I think the-
The staff.
What I'd like endorsement of is the staffing plan for public safety functions, because I think that's, that's a conversation that's gonna come to a head in the next couple of years. We might as well get ahead of it. The fire union in particular had already put into our contract that we would group, establish a committee, joint committee with the union, to, to go through different options, the schedule options as well as staffing level options there.
And the advantage on the fire side is they can get the Safer grants.
Yeah.
So they can actually front-load augmentation of the workforce. Was it three years?
Well, it's, I guess the program has changed recently, so I'm, I'm not gonna have current knowledge. At one time, it was, you would win the grant and Safer would pay for the staff 100%. And then it would decrease to 50%, and then to 25%, and then you would have to be on your own. So the notion would be, you would try to build a transition plan for staffing levels so that the town's levy would grow to the point at the end of the grant period where you were able to sustain the staffing level that you would. But the grantors have come to hate, I won't name any of the cities, but there's one or two cities, I live close to one of them, that has routinely gotten Safer grants, used up, used up all the money, and then laid off the people at the end, and then waited the necessary waiting period, get another Safer grant. And that's how they've been running their fire department for years.
New Bege?
No, not New Bege. Well, I don't know if New Bege did it or not, but Fall River has definitely-
The Reeves all-
Really, really run this ragged, and I think the grantors are getting sick of that. That's why the changes have been made recently. It's like, you can't use this to supplement staff on a rolling basis. You need to transition to a higher level.
Is there a similar grant process through the PD?
I don't think so. Now, we're all running scared with recruiting, training, and retaining police officers, just because Post has made a lot of changes, so.
So you presented this back in June, and it's written as a draft. We just gonna adapt, adopt this list that we have and just use this going forward?
But the starting point, I think, at this point.
Yeah, I mean, for the-
Well, there's quite a bit on here, and just so it doesn't, if we keep adding to it, we're never gonna get it done. So, I was just looking at, and if you read through this, there's quite a bit on here. There's, some of the things are, probably 50% of first thing is the planning, zoning, conservation application process. They've already started that process to get it all online.
Sidewalk just barely got started, 'cause we were talking about that.
Right. But you look at that, you have the, the compensation system, that, that got pushed off until the spring, Matt. Ran out of time. The, we just went through the feasibility thing, and Matt's gonna look into the financial planning portion of it, staffing, he just talked about for the public safeties, the library trustee, ADA accessibility, then we have GIS, he's already talked about. Establish specific purpose stabilization funds associated policies for ongoing fire. So would that be the one that we have on the warrant for this special town meeting for the fire truck? So we already did that, so we already talked about the, the energy planning, the grants. He's got a list of grants on here, and then also the next section, identify paths to address medium and long-term staffing needs. We need some sort of, in my opinion, we need a, some sort of HR department town-wide, because we have so many employees in here. It would take the burden off the town administrator on, on some of the things, and help the town employees as a whole. So with all that being said, I think we got a pretty big list, and to keep adding to it, we won't chisel it down.
Didn't see the downtown revitalization.
No, that's what you wanted on here. I mean, I don't think that's a big add, because I, first of all, I did that for so long, I know where the sources are, and it's just another thing for Bob to do.
I'm just trying to think to keep it at a manageable level, so then Matt can meet the goals that we're trying to set for us.
And we wanna keep our fingers on it. As things-
Yeah, if we have this list, we can, once a month or something, it doesn't have to be every single meeting, but once a month or whatever, we get an update as to how we're knocking down on the list.
Yeah, we get an update on the list itself, and then like, if we can do like, once a quarter, like, the four and soon-to-be after the next election, five of us sit down, and if there's things that we can think of, like, sit down and weigh them all out and-
Yeah, we start knocking down some of the list, and we can easily add on to it, but-
Well, I'd like to add on one, just to get the ball rolling, but I, I still feel strongly that an access route at the high school is, is something that enjoys a certain immediate sense. that an access route at the high school is, is something that enjoys a certain immediacy as outlined by our public safety people. We identified through a walk Friday afternoon or morning, a relatively clean and easy fix that many there thought probably could be done in-house. I'd like to really explore that further and.
Is there an opportunity to use regrind or anything like that out there?
Yeah.
So we'll go through that when we have more time to present it, but I agree. And then to the extent that any additional access issues are addressed, it is part of the conversation around energy and solar and development and the rest of it. But we all, I think, recognize the size of that project is, you know, it's intimidating. It needs to be thought through. But in terms of bringing a road up, where we talked about bringing one up from the main road, that's very, that's, that's like springtime, after the thaw, make it happen kind of thing. If we all agree and the school committee goes along with it, there's no need to torture it, just needs to be done.
It's a pretty simple approach.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, yeah. Your snowplow and your snowplow will get you halfway there.
Put Hal and my bobcat and we're there.
Yeah, you got one of those, we're golden.
I think Lisa should run the chainsaw.
What are you doing Saturday, Mike?
No, but Matt, honestly, if that was added to that list and we knocked that off pretty quick, it's a feather in the cap to, to knock something off the list.
Just want to clarify one thing, Mr. Chairman, if I can, on the second bullet point on the page two. There's the specific purpose stabilization funds, it's really, this is actually two bullets, policies for ongoing financial stability. I think the one thing that in a bond ratings call that we don't have a really good answer for is do we have financial policies in place for free cash, capital spending, year-over-year growth of the levy, et cetera? In some cases, yes. I mean, I have seen a free cash policy and things that were worked on by the select board and not that long ago, really, before I started here, but not that much before that. Those need to be updated to reflect the financial condition of the town as it is now. The bond rating agencies like to see that because what they're saying is you have adopted best practices not only to try to generate some cash for the short term, but you are looking for your long-term stability. So you're prioritizing resources as they come through the door. They really like to see that. So if we want to take a shot at anything better than AA2, we have to have those in place for we can get anything higher than that. There are templates available, so this is not.
Is that something you're bringing?
Matt and Jean writing everything word by word. I think this is Matt and Jean going over templates and picking out the things we like and tailoring it for the town of Douglas and then putting it.
So you bring back recommendations to the board and vote on them?
But dovetails with her contract as well as mine, so it makes sense.
Good for me.
There is a lot here, but I think we've already started a lot of it, so.
Right. Yeah, I just didn't want to see it get so big that.
Yeah. Understood. I mean, the hardest.
You get over one with the list and you won't get anywhere.
The hardest things to do here is sidewalk management plan and cooperation with the trustees. The trustees have to want to have this conversation. I'm offering it up. If they want some assistance designing their design effort, we can help with that. Sidewalk management, we should just do, because it, it hems in the potential liability of the town. We've already done the condition study on town sidewalks at the same time we did pavement management study. So we already have the first piece, we just need to get the second piece done, which, you know, a lot of the Stantec report probably modified to be that plan. But with that plan, there needs to be something that comes out of capital, even if it's a token. As long as there's progress being made forward, you meet the threshold that your insurer and the courts want to see when they look at liability issues. You don't have to spend millions, you just.
John would be presenting something like that.
That would be for the highway department to do, yep.
Just want to put a motion to just move forward with the goals that's presented.
Has amended.
Has amended. There's two items, two items added to it.
Highway access, the high school access and the downtown revitalization. Is that?
That works. I think that's two noble, worthwhile things.
So, so moved?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on it? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Approved minutes and possible votes? Do we have a paper report tonight, Matt?
I'll be fast.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of Tuesday, September 20th, 2022.
What do you care, seconded?
I'm trying to get through them. Did that other person come back due to these minutes? Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
You leave Stephanie alone, she does good.
No, Stephanie does an awesome job.
I know.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. No further discussion. Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is that all the minutes?
Yep, we're up to number 13.
Your report, Mr. Administrator.
Number 13, had you played that as your Powerball and in your number? Who does that, right?
Did you see it? Yeah, did you see that? 13, did you see the daily? Did you see the daily number for Halloween?
No.
Six, 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 six.
Perfect for Halloween, yeah.
Yeah, I seen that, and then I came up with the 13 and 13 and Powerball, I'm like.
So I have a new number for you, 529,300. That's our latest grant. That is a site readiness program grant that the town will support. We already voted this 100, right?
Yes.
Town meeting already voted 100 match for this. So the full budget is 629,300 for engineering related to getting us ready for.
North Street.
North Street. And the looping of utilities to an industrial road into Pine Sandstone or the site soon to formally be known as Pine Sandstone for purposes of further development. Now, loop may include, you know, significant water assets, water storage asset in order to improve pressure and flow in that part of town. North Street is a legacy. There are many, many bends and twists in the road, and there have been any number of accommodations in the past with the way utilities were strung up there. And it may be time now to increase their size and to straighten them out. So it's really, this more than any other project we've done will involve a significant amount of public outreach on the part of the administration and this board because, you know, when you start talking about North Street, lots of property lines come right up the edge of the street, the streets all over the place, people have retaining walls, there are telephone poles. But to neglect it for too long and not do this would really, would really be a problem. So we're going, this is the first step. This is the second site readiness grant that the town has won in the last three years. You recall that the Massworks Site Readiness already gave us money for engineering to go up Davis Street with, with utilities. So we got a lot of projects going on at the same time. Just in case anybody's keeping score, Bob.
Yes.
The total economic development grants over the last two years, $8,157,401, which is a pretty hefty amount.
The latest one will have residential benefits associated with it?
Yeah, well, you know, you're going to replace smaller pipes in the ground with loops, so you're going to be fed from more than one direction. You have a lot of people living on North Street now. It's not just Pond Street and those developments that were done some time ago, but now you have North Village, which you have many hundreds more people living.
So we should have that at our fingertips when we're talking not just about tax and economic development, but also the residential benefits too.
Correct. On November 16th, the town will receive an award for its economic development efforts related with the cubes at Gilboa. It's a Blackstone Valley Chamber event. If you're interested in attending, it's at the Pleasant Valley Country Club. That's on November 16th. I don't think you get around to golf. You get around to eggs and whatever sausage products.
I think it suggests we have a table there from the board and any other town folks.
Yeah, I did talk to Jeanne Eber, and she suggested that today, that the town of Douglas get a ticket.
Yeah, since we're getting an award, it might not be a bad idea.
What, yeah, I'll pitch in on that. How much is that?
Can we get all the details?
All those play?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And no round of golf? I don't play golf.
Same here.
He has no time. Don't introduce him there.
Golf is soccer with walking, as I'm concerned.
That was the 16th?
Never heard it described like that, but okay.
I'm with George Cullen when it comes to golf.
That's a breakfast.
And Robin Williams.
Robin Williams.
Okay. ARPA, we have signed the phone contract, so we discussed that. You approved that funding, I would just want to head and sign them. We've already had our onboarding meeting on the phone, both us and the schools, so we're looking for project rollout, November, December timeframe. We have also completed the processing of a premium pay. So live checks went out yesterday to all those that were in the program. There might still be a couple of stragglers. The way this works with stragglers is, you know, if you think you worked time for eligible purposes, just submit a memo, we'll go through it. What we would use at this point is the hourly rate that was calculated for the main body of the program. It was $9 and change.
We just subsidize the amount.
So there won't be that much left. So if anybody's still out there and thought, well, we got passed over, then they should, should be applying for it.
Is there a deadline to do that or self-identified?
No, it's ARPA, right? So it can be December 31st, 2024.
No, just administratively, you.
I'm not going to set a deadline. I mean, it's kind of like self-help, right? We're making it available. If you think you got it, then take a shot at it. Our pavement project is done for the year. So we finished up Cemetery Street and Vine Street and the other projects that were done already, Northwest Maine being probably the biggest one. They all came out really nice. We're extremely happy with the work product, so hats off to Harshaw Paving at Uxbridge. We're excellent partners to work with on this. Their handwork was right there, they had the same crew out every day working on the site. It was really a pleasure to work with them.
I'm really happy for our friends on Vine Street. They've been, they've been driving on garbage for a long time, and to be honest, I had never heard.
Cemetery Street got so excited, they, they produced a video.
Oh, yeah? So.
Maybe it's a feel-good thing, but it's also a huge quality of life thing for residents in any municipality, so we'll keep going with it. We have lots of things on the target list to do.
It's a big benefit of the people doing snow removal because.
Right.
The clouds aren't going to get banged up doing those roads anymore.
Yeah, but I was forgetting Southwest Maine, but a piece of Southwest Maine got done too. You all received a copy of the radio, Public Safety Radio Project update. You know, we got to the point where we had to start using really nasty legal terms like default and other things to get the vendor in here and have a sort of come-to-the-Lord meeting with them. They played. I thought it was a constructive meeting, a necessary meeting. So we're looking to be on the towers during the rigging work in the week of November 14th, and then try to go live sometime in January with our system. There were some complexities that were explained to me that may, may understand better why we really just can't drop them and go to somebody else. As it turns out, the company that does a lot of the rigging, a lot of the work on the towers, actually owns one of the two towers that we are putting equipment on. So it creates a little bit of a competitive problem. If you take the work away from them, give it to their competition, and then expect them to hurry it along, I think it's naive. It's naive to think that Industrial Communications would welcome their competition to be on their tower installing equipment on their property. So we just have to bite our tongues and wait for them to get, get ready and get it done. Couple of quick things about the fire department, and then I think I'll finish for tonight. We have had a mishap with the pump on Engine 3. Engine 3 is our frontline piece, so it's usually first out the door. A piece of metal that appears to be a piece of a pipe or a drill bit or something found its way into the pump and rattled around in the pump and got stuck and did all kinds of damage to the impeller of the pump, to the point now where the pump is no longer operating at safe level, so it has failed inspection. Our initial approach to this is to file a claim with MYA because the expense, it's potentially, we don't have a final quote yet, but, you know, pumps are in the neighborhood of $50,000. But if pumps run really hot for a really long time because they've been damaged, the transmission for the pump can also become damaged because the heat alters the nature of the steel and the bearings. So this could end up being a really big project. We just don't have that much money in the budget at this point in the fiscal year to swing it, so we're going to have to pursue insurance and.
Could you use OP funds for that?
Yes, you could.
So maybe something to discuss once we get a final quote.
Yeah, if we're really stuck. It stinks to have to do with that, but it's for any general government purpose, replacing a critical piece out of fire.
Try to get to MYA too, same time.
Yeah. Lastly, we've had some staff transition. You know, we had a lieutenant leave for another community, and we have a lieutenant who's announced his retirement. So we are, we have two lieutenants have left out of our three. We have fortunately replaced them already, so we have start dates in mid-November for two new lieutenants coming from other departments. Very successful recruiting effort. I'm excited to have these two people come on board. I participated in the interview process. They're very highly qualified people with a lot of experience, so at the proper time, we'll welcome them to the town of Douglas, but, you know, this is, this is always work. Keeping us staffed is just constant iteration. And these are two really good hires. I think we're going to be in good shape. I can keep going, but it's time to go.
He's got candy to eat.
I have about 12 pounds of candy that have already been confiscated.
There's probably another 12 that you don't know about.
Exactly. It's in mattresses and pillows and shoes.
All right. Are there any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
I know you're disappointed, but.
I am. Seeing as there aren't any, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.